Welcome to Spokane City Council briefing meeting for May 23, 2022. We don't have an advanced agenda today because we have a holiday next Monday. But Ms. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmembers Oppone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right. I don't believe there's anything requesting an actual change to the agenda. There is some potential motion for a deferral and motion to substitute versions out there. But did anyone else have anything that they need to suspend the rules on? I'm assuming no, but I haven't heard any requests. All right. Well, the first question we had is the lease agreement amendments with the two community centers. And I think Carly came down today especially. We're trying to still figure out the Northeast one because we haven't finalized the lease with MultiCare yet. And my understanding is, but I'm hoping you might shed some light, is that we can't use our SIP loan plan for the improvements if we've leased the building or something like that. And I'm just wondering how we did it at the East Central with CHAZ and how you propose if we do it that way, we would do it with Northeast.
So I think two different topics, but I'll try to address both of them.
Okay.
So I'll answer your question on the CHAZ Dental Clinic. With how that one was a little bit different is we built that building from scratch and we used grant money we received as well as CDBG money. And then finally, that last piece was the SIP loan. We own the building, so the city of Spokane owns the building, and we are leasing it to CHAZ. And so, and that lease payment pays the SIP loan back. That's what we did.
Did we, just to interrupt you?
No, that's okay.
Did they sign the lease with the city or did they sign the lease with MLK?
They signed the lease with the city.
Okay.
Yep. So MLK actually doesn't have anything to do with the CHAZ Dental Clinic.
Even though it's on the same property?
Even though it's the same property, right. So we had to have, that Dental Clinic was a fun project. So we actually had to, because the size of the footprint was going to be bigger than was allowed, we had to get an easement from the planning director. Basically, easement's the wrong word. There's a special term for it. But essentially, to allow that to be on there. Talking with our current CFO, she says that it would be unlikely that if we were to do that project again, the SIP loan would be approved. Apparently, we were right on the line of whether that was appropriate funding anyway. But the big difference between that and what it is now is, yes, the city owns that building, so we can, I mean, if for whatever reason CHAZ pulls out of it, we're stuck with the Dental Clinic. So.
But we own the library building.
We do.
In Northeast.
Correct.
So that's the same. But, so the question was, when I was talking to our finance people, whether we put the SIP loan payments as part of the lease with the Northeast Central or if we have, so it sounds like we have to do that.
Right.
In order to get the SIP loan approval.
So what I would, I mean, I think, in this way, I think it's two different things to a certain extent, is the lease agreement is sort of urgent to get fixed so the state funding can come through. So this was a request that Northeast Community Center had put in back in March. The, the funding of making those improvements, to me, is even separate from the, the lease agreement. If we, the lease agreement currently exists through 2023. So no matter what, and that currently excludes the library.
Right.
So that wouldn't include that, but it does have the other building. So if we wanted to do improvements at the, the library, I, again, because we own it, if we didn't lease that to Northeast, so if we owned the building and kept that, I suppose in theory, we could use the SIP loan. Again, my understanding from our CFO is that would be highly frowned upon at this point in time, even though we have done it in the past.
Well, do you think we could probably get that worked out with the CFO in the next two weeks? That's, that is my question. Because I, I don't want to do something today that precludes our options later. That's my concern. I don't want to, I totally support it.
Right.
I want to get it done. My understanding is that there's not an actual deadline, but we just want to get going on this and get this project.
Right.
But it seems.
I think the concern is when the state does ask for the paperwork, we want to have it ready.
Yeah.
To go. I guess my thing is, is if, if the CFO says we can't use the SIP loan, then what are we going to do? Are we not going to lease the building to Northeast Community Center?
No, I just.
That's not an option.
No, no, that's not, that's not the option. But we, I just don't think we've had that conversation with her.
Okay.
So I'm just wondering, two weeks, I don't think the state, that's going to make a difference.
Again, to me, my issue is just, I promised Dave I'd get this done. But you're right, I don't think two weeks is going to, they have not yet asked for it yet. So if we can get it done in two weeks, I'm just not sure what other information you're going to want in two weeks. So I guess my concern is if we don't have it worked out in two weeks, are we going to delay again?
Hopefully not.
Okay.
But I didn't, I didn't know it was on the agenda today. I mean, I was gone, so I didn't know it was on the agenda until that. But we've met, I've met with Dave, Betsy, and then Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I just, I just want to be clear. I don't support doing a SIP loan. I, I think the request was for ARPA funding, and that was the intention. And so I think by doing the SIP loan, we're actually putting them in a pretty tough spot. They're actually having to go fundraise additional dollars as a result of that. Even the county has stepped up and made a direct allocation to them, which we have not done. And so to me, that's the simple solution to all of this. We do a direct allocation out of ARPA. That was the ask. That's what we deserve in Northeast Spokane. So to me, it's a very simple solution.
Ms. Clerk.
So my question now is, I would like to defer this for two weeks to June 6.
So that's a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilmember Wilkerson.
Well, Council President, in your absence, we did have this discussion, and we really couldn't get to this definitive information, to SIP or not to SIP is the question before us. I do hear Councilmember Cathcart, when we approved this commitment, we approved it not knowing where the money was going to come from. We just knew, a hook or crook, we're going to fund it. We just didn't know out of what pot of money. So if this two weeks will allow us to have closure and move forward and does not jeopardize state funding, because really, it's about if Northeast actually leases the building under that contract.
Correct.
Is what is, is really the determining factor.
The, the lease agreement allows them to have subleases.
Yes.
Which essentially would be MultiCare. So, yeah. Deferring two weeks, I agree, probably isn't going to, to do anything. I just want to, who's working on, I mean, I believe Matt Boston is working on this still currently.
That is, and now that I'm back, I'll, I'll reengage.
Okay.
And again, you know, we looked at the numbers that I got from Dave. There was quite a bit of delta that could pay for it. And I'm just thinking of treating it the same as the East Central at the time, now MLK at East Central, in, in my mind. But we can have that debate. I just want to make sure that we have the options that we can choose from. So that's the purpose of the deferral.
Yep, makes sense.
All those in favor of deferral to June 6 indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? Okay, that's, matter five is deferred until June 6. All right, it looks like the next thing I see in my notes from the agenda is on ordinance C36212. And that was a request to substitute a new version of it that I trust was circulated in my absence. I don't know if anyone can speak to that. This is on the Fleet Services, changed a couple of numbers, basically to update because it's later in the year that we're passing it. I think that's the only change I see. I'm, I'm, yep. We'll hear from Art, Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you, City Councilmembers. Yes, this was a changed resolution. As you recall, the first time it came through, it did not pass. So upon some discussions internally, we went back to the drawing board and redrafted, and are only asking for appropriation to support what we know to go in for the infrastructure this year. So we are just bringing you a smaller chunk back, and hopefully that folks are a little more comfortable with, with that line out, rather than just asking for the full appropriation of all the amount of revenue that's coming in without the solid plan that was, that's now in place.
Okay. Any questions for Tony?
So the appropriations for this year, will we be appropriating the full amount for next year even though they do not have a solid plan? But those monies have been set aside for that purpose.
Councilmember Wilkerson, my understanding from the Fleet team is they're actually going to be forming a committee to review based on the orders that are being placed and what those EVs are. A committee will come together to identify where and how many EVs, infrastructure projects we need in the year. So we may be asking for the full amount, we may not. But that committee will develop a plan, and that will be part of the budget process.
I'm sorry, clarity for me, if we do not spend the full amount, those monies stay where they were designated for.
They stay in a reserve.
Okay.
We did come to you to, and you did pass a resolution creating that reserve.
Okay.
So it is specific for that purpose and no other purpose.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right. Is there a motion to substitute the version?
Sub moved. Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, that is substituted. And then on C36209, I think there are going to be two requests for substitution, but we'll have, I have a vote on it. The first one was a version that was circulated last week.
Wednesday.
And I think, well, do you want to make a motion to?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to substitute the version that was circulated last week for C36209.
And is currently published on our website.
Yes, thank you.
It's in the packet.
And it's in the packet.
Yeah.
All of the above.
Second. Okay. Any discussion about the motion to substitute? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Okay. Any abstentions? All right, so that is currently substituted. And now Councilmember Cathcart, I think you have a motion to substitute.
Yeah, I would make a motion to substitute my proposed striking amendment that was distributed on Friday for ordinance C36209.
Second.
Okay. Would you like to speak to your?
Sure.
Motion?
Yeah, happy to. So, you know, this has been a conversation for quite a while, probably as long as I've been on the council, probably longer. And I, I've felt for quite some time that the direction we were going was not in a direction that would either A, achieve the results that we're looking for, or B, be something that was implemented fairly across the city. And so as I've thought about this in a myriad of different ways, I thought, what would be the most reasonable, simplistic, and achievable way to actually reduce our water use? Because it does have a big impact, especially on our infrastructure, our, you know, water tanks, things like that. As we've heard, you know, they're very expensive, and we do have to build more of them as we use more and more of our water supply. So it, it is an important thing for taxpayers, ratepayers, et cetera, to consider. So the goal should be to get something that's actually achievable. So what I'm proposing is, rather than a mandate that says that you can't water on certain days, or you can't water during certain hours, or you can only water in certain situations, we are, I am proposing a different way of going about it where we are focusing on incentives. And so my proposal would eliminate those mandates and instead replace them with two proposals related to water reduction rates. So if you reduce your water use by 20% year over year, then you would find a 25% reduction on your water rates. If you reduce your water use by 40%, you would find a 45% reduction in your water rates. If you do the math, thinking about every other day watering for four months, it works out to about 16% of the year. And so my sense is that if we encourage 20% for some, 40% for others, and we are including all ratepayers, not excluding the thousands and thousands and thousands that we serve outside the city, but we include all ratepayers, that we will actually find, I believe, a greater reduction in water usage as people think about their, how it's going to affect their pocketbooks. And I think this is going to be a really big benefit for, for our community. You know, right now, there is no urgency that this has to happen today. We're at 149% of normal in our, our snowpack. So we are in a really, really solid situation right now, which gives us the flexibility to think more thoughtfully in how we can encourage rather than require. And I think that most people are willing to kind of go along with that. They, they tend to revolt when government, when the heavy hand of government comes down and says, you will do it this way or else. And I think that that is a much better model to say, hey, here's a benefit to you. And by the way, in my district, we have a lot of customers who struggle to pay their utility bills. And this would benefit them, because now they can reduce water, which helps the whole city, and they can reduce their water bill, which helps them. So it's a win-win across the board. This is a great way to address a lot of these needs that are happening across the city. Further, I, I'm worried about how we would go about implementing a ban. Because right now, our code enforcement is not proactive, it is subjective and based on complaints. And therefore, some neighborhoods, some neighbors, some people might find themselves being enforced a lot more than others, which goes to a pretty big concern over equity and, and implement, in the implementation of this law. And, and I just think that this is a great way to, to go about this in, in just a positive manner. So I think that there's just way more that we can do positively to encourage our, our community members to reduce their water use. And the last part of my amendment includes a, puts it into code, so it's actually in code, that the city's water department has to continue to do a robust education on how to reduce water, best practices in water reduction, ways you can go about it, that sort of thing. And, and do it based on science and data. And we're doing that now, but we could step it up and do a lot more. But this puts it into code, so it's not going to just simply stop at some point in time. We will continue to do this. So I think there's a lot of really good positives that we can do here, and it continues the reductions ongoing. Because every five years, I would, the, the way I propose this, we reset the base year, and you have to keep that 20% reduction. So now you're being forced to continue to reduce, reduce, reduce. So I think that there's also a long-term reduction that will be found through this as well. So anyway, I'm pleased to present this. I think it's a great alternative and just a, a completely different vision for how we can reduce water without the use of mandates and prohibitions.
Anyone else want to speak either for or against the amendment?
Can I ask questions? Since this is a pretty big change just over the weekend.
Sure.
I was wondering, like, the process that you came to this, who did you engage, what stakeholders have you talked with? How did you come up with this idea?
I heard from a lot of our community members who were scared to death about being unable to use their water. And I thought, what is a really good way that we can both help them and help our community reduce water? And I thought, well, the proposal that we're, we're thinking about excludes thousands of ratepayers, so we're already narrowing the field there. This would expand the field, so we'd see greater reductions. And, and further, when you think about the math in every other day watering, again, this could potentially find us with a much larger decrease. And it's an incentive, it's an encouragement, it's a benefit. And so that, that was my process. My process was, how do we do this without hitting people over the head?
So how much do you expect this would save people to incentivize them?
Well, if you reduce by 20%, you save 25%. You reduce by 40%, you save 45%.
On your water bill. So we did the math, we pulled out a water bill, right, and looked at it, and it came out to $2.76.
Then they're doing a really good job, and that's not who this is targeted to.
Oh, so it doesn't seem like that's going to really help a ton of people.
Right, but they're not going to need to be prohibited from watering already, because they're already doing it if their water bill is that low.
Then the second one is, how will that impact our system and the cost that we would forego for that system?
How much will it cost to hire all the code enforcement agents to go out and enforce this equitably?
Well, right now, it's not, because we're focusing on a two-year implementation with education.
It's inequitable enforcement is what it is.
But it starts with a two-year education, which is what sounds like you're supporting.
Five-year education, actually, but yeah.
Not, not the proposal.
My proposal.
Right, right, but the, the standard one. I'm just wondering, this, I don't know where these numbers came up from, and it doesn't seem like it was, had input from the Public Works Department, how this would impact, how this would impact the overall system, how it would.
Are you saying that this proposal is endorsed by the Public Works Department?
I'm saying it's been in consultation with them and talked with them extensively.
And they're endorsing it?
I didn't say that.
So they're not endorsing it?
I'm saying that, who did you talk to to create your proposal?
I talked to my constituents, and I have shared it with Marlene Feist, our Public Works Director, and got her feedback. And she even said it would be much easier to implement than the ban.
All right, and I'm then wondering what the impact will be in it, on the average person, it's about $2.
That's a conversation we can have, but.
Well, it would be nice.
There's no urgency today, 149% of normal, so we can have that conversation.
And when did you come up with this proposal that throughout this process has been over a year process? So why didn't you bring up an incentive for that?
I have let, I have let every single council member here know my concerns for the past year. I voted against the voluntary ban a year ago because there was zero commitment from this council to say it would be temporary. And this is why, because today we're going to vote to ban. So I have been focused on this for a year, and I've heard from constituents for the last few weeks since we finally made this public for this proposal, and they are very, very concerned. And so I am listening to my constituents who want to see something different than a ban.
Well, I just think process-wise, we've been not talking about this for over a year, and you brought it up three days before the vote, a new idea. So it seems like that has been pretty rushed, and we don't even know the real impact of it.
I was censured day of. Processes here happen and go pretty quickly. And so, I mean, the, the process argument is pretty frustrating, especially considering it hit one of us pretty hard, so.
Speaking of process.
Yeah.
I would love to call on you. Okay.
So can I ask Marlene a question?
Yeah.
So Marlene, when we established our water rates the last time, the last time we did it for three, we established water rates, was it three years?
Yes.
And those had all sorts of incentives wrapped up in those water rates, if I remember.
Right, so we have a, we have our water conservation program, our Water Wise program. We have credits for things like Spokanescape.
Right.
Removing turf and replacing it with lower drought-tolerant landscaping. We have a slate of rebates for things like smart controllers and toilets, and we get, we give out free conservation kits. We have some audits. We have a study session, actually, on water conservation on Thursday.
Okay.
And, and Kristen's going to give you her plan. So we kind of went over what her results were for last year, but she's going to show you going forward some additional things that we're planning, including some audits for higher water users to help them come up with ideas to save water.
Right.
So, so yes, those things, of course, are built into the budget.
And then when we discussed that, there were different rates for people that lived in apartments. I'm trying to remember.
Well, there, there is a tiered system.
Yes.
It's designed to encourage people to use less water, right? So your lifeline rate, so the rate that you pay in the winter really covers showers and.
Right.
Drinking water and washing your dishes. That amount of water is cheaper than if you use a whole bunch of water on your lawn.
Right.
So we do have a tiered structure.
Right, okay.
For residential customers, we're working on an upgrade, or an update to the tiered structure for commercial customers. We're looking at how we can maybe simplify that, but still get some of the results that, because our, our challenges are in the summer, frankly.
Right, it's just those months. So I guess my question is then, when we talk about incentives for those months, how does that fit, is, does that stay completely separate from that discussion on how we set rates? Do you see what I'm saying?
Well, overall, the conservation measures are a small part of our, our overall operational budget in the, in the water department. As you can imagine, most of our money's going to paying for the people and the equipment and stuff.
Right.
That run the system on a day-to-day basis, for the electricity, for the pumping, and those kinds of things. So water conservation is a component of the budget? I wouldn't say it's a huge component of the budget, at least not currently.
Okay. Budget, okay. And when do we start talking about the next three years?
Probably the fall. It would be great to have the next three years of rates set by mid-year of 2023 to start in 2024. That will help to inform the budget process for that next year and for the coming years, give people a little more assurance on what rates will look like when we talk about predictability and so forth to get that done. Plus, then we can kind of, we can keep that discussion sort of, when you then go into budget, you'll have those numbers to be able to install into the budget in advance.
And so any of incentives that Councilmember Cathcart has talked about, those, would those be fair game to be put into the budget discussion?
Right, so.
And have those?
To, to have a good understanding, because we, we haven't put numbers to what the council member has suggested, there, there's definitely a way to do it, whether it's exactly the way it's written in that proposed legislation, we haven't really determined. We're also looking at how the new utility billing system works and what's easier and what's not easier. The switch over might make it a little challenging for data in the first year or so. But we would want to budget for what we think, if we wanted to do something like that, we would want, we would want to assess what we think the budget impact would be and be able to address that, so that we can still cover our other expenses, for sure.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion on the amendment? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the amendment proposed by Councilmember Cathcart indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nay. Any abstentions? Okay, that was not amended at this point, but I will just note that the current one before us has a, a window to consider rates that would add to water conservation. So that'd be totally fair, as you were kind of getting at, Councilmember Stratton, that's exactly what's, we're not doing anything for the next 18 months, two years, but when we come to that, that's exactly the sort of thing we'll be looking at, so. All right, was there, I don't think there's any other things on the agenda, so we're ready for the consent agenda? No, we don't do that anymore. All right, is, so we don't have to approve the agenda because it's already approved, subject to those amendments? Then we're going to have executive session on collective bargaining issues. Want a, amount of time?
Half an hour.
All right, so we will go into executive session until 4:30. And for those of you who are listening or watching, we don't intend to do any further business after that time. And if, at 4:30, I'll either, we'll come out and I'll adjourn the meeting, or if we need to extend, someone will announce an extension, and then we'll adjourn the meeting after the extension. So with that, we'll go into executive session and see some of you on the other end. The rest of you, hopefully, we'll see you at 6 o'clock. The rest of you, hopefully, we'll see you at 6 o'clock.
City Council is extending executive session for ten minutes until 4:40 p.m. No further action is expected when they return.
City council members are extending another 10 minutes until 4:50 PM. No further action is expected when they return.
I thought you were gonna wrap it. As I walk through the valley of the shadow of God.
And for those playing on the phone, robust.
I don't think I have the chops for that. I could sing it Broadway style. Give my regards to counsel on their existence. I want a top hat and everything.
I'll be back at 4:50.
Back at 4:50?
Thank you.
All right, this is Council President Breeam Beggs. And we have finished our executive session. And we are not taking any further action. So we are adjourned until 6 p.m.